I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you were. Call the meeting to order. We'll have approval of the minutes. Motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on May 13th, 2025. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane. Do we have a second? Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. That brings us now to our department committee reports. What's that? Oh, yeah, but Keanu's. Yeah, we were gonna, Bob makes a good point. We had a proclamation to present to Keanu King, who was awarded the Eagle Scout in Sag Harbor this past Sunday. I was at a ceremony honoring him, and I invited him here to honor him here at the meeting, but I guess he's not present. But congratulations to Keanu. So again, that brings us to department committee reports. I'll be reading the treasurer's report since Charles is not with us. Alex is on Zoom if we have any questions. So the revenues to date total approximately seventeen point four million, and that is exceeding the annual budget by 10%. So our revenues are up 10%. All income-producing departments have exceeded their budget except for the sewer department. Neighboring districts have fully paid their share of ambulance and fire coverage. Expenditures. Expenditures to date total approximately eighteen point seven million. This includes 3.8 million accounting reclassification of old capital projects to the general fund. Expenses excluding the accountant adjustment are fourteen point nine million, eighty-four percent of the annual budget, and that is in line with our expectations. And you should have a report of all the numbers in your packet. So I need a motion to approve that report.
I'm with.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Corsh. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. That brings us now to the police, the fire, and ambulance reports. For the month of May 2025, we had eight hundred, the Sag Harbor Police Department had eight hundred and sixty-nine calls for service. We had seven aggravated unlicensed operation. We had twenty-one suspended registrations. We had one endangering the welfare of a child in the second degree harassment and reckless endangerment. We had one leaving the scene. We had one peddling without a permit. We had one amplified music. We had one DWI arrest. And this is a sign that we're moving into summer. We had twenty-one motor vehicle accidents last month. So be careful out there. We had thirty-two arrests. We had one DWI arrest, and we had one hundred and seventy-eight uniform traffic tickets issued, and that's from our chief, Chief Rob Drake. I just want to take a moment and thank Dan Shedrick and the Chamber of Commerce. They put together a nice event to honor the traffic control officers. It's been a little bit of a tough month for them. For some reason, people are, I guess, emotional or angry, and our TCOs have been bearing the brunt of that, and they've been handling themselves professionally, politely when they've come across these incidents. So Dan, who's a resident in the village, and the chamber got together and did a nice event for them at the cinema. And I just wanted to thank them for that. Another, two other people I want to recognize is Cheryl Rossi and Jeannie Naterno. When I get my cup of coffee in the morning, I see Cheryl and Jeannie, they're walking the sidewalks and they're picking up trash every single morning. They're scouring Main Street. I know. So I thanked them, and it's something they do, and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge them and thank them for doing that.
It's great. Really good here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That brings it.
Taking care of the village.
They're taking care. So that brings us to the Sag Harbor Fire Department report. In the month of 2025, the fire department volunteered for over one thousand one hundred and eighty-eight point twenty-four man-hours during the month. The officers and members of the department responded to a total of seventy calls for service. There was one kitchen fire and a mutual aid to a working structure fire in Bridgehampton. And we had great weather for the Memorial Day parade. For those, the firemen came out to honor, you know, those that we lost for Memorial Day. That's from the Sag Harbor Fire Department, First Assistant Chief Gary Wilson. That brings me now to the ambulance corps. In the month of May 2025, we had sixty-nine emergency calls. We had four work nights, four meetings, one training session. We didn't have any drills, and we had two work details, and of course, the Memorial Day parade for total man-hours of one thousand one hundred and ninety-six. And that concludes my reports. That will bring us to deputy mayor Hay with the Justice Court, Parks and Open Spaces, and the planning board.
Thank you, mayor. Start with the Parks and Open Space, and we have here Drew Harvey from the Parks and Open Space Committee who wants to share with the board some information he has on the water access points.
Can you get that email?
Okay.
Wait, just give me one second.
Thank you. Thanks, Drew.
Um, yeah, Drew Harvey. I'm actually in the village. I'm also on the planning board, but I'm not representing up here tonight. I'm here on behalf of Parks and Space Committee, Advisory Committee. Just to update you guys on where we're at with this water access points project. If you notice, the dates up above there, we were from the Harbor Committee. September of last year, we just went back into them June of this year. We were in front of this board September 10th of last year, and now we're back as the follow-up as we move forward. So essentially, half of this you guys have seen before, right? It's the information that was sent to you last year, identifying the seven water access points that we currently have on record in the village. We've taken steps to survey to get an idea of what's there at all seven locations, but then we fell in on actually delineating property lines, getting a little more information on four priority ones where we know they're the high boundary of the village, and there's also some encroachments taking place. Those are Amherst, Dartmouth, Notre Dame, and John Street. So on the process section, you can see what we've done so far in blow. The last two are kind of the steps we've taken just this last month. We've gotten those surveys, and then we actually went out and we flagged the potential locations of where these water access posts will be. Now we're seeking the trustee approval to review those flag locations. We encourage you guys to not only look at it on the survey, but if you have some time next week or the following week to go look at them on-site, you can do that, because the next step we request is to be allowed to install proposed. If you keep leaving through, you can see what the post looked like finished. It's what we proposed, and we got positive feedback from you guys last year. It's a granite post with a water access and breathing and the village of Sag Harbor seal in a bronze plaque on the top, so it's known that it is a village, right?
Really look great.
They do. They're beautiful. Thank you very much.
So what are you, what are you looking from us to give you approval to install these, or?
So the last four images, we marked with a stake and an orange ribbon.
I saw you.
Yeah, the proposed location. If the trustees give us permission to actually go and install the posts, my organization is happy to move forward with that.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that, too.
Were these done by an architect? I mean, by a surveyor?
So the surveys were done by a surveyor, engineer, and then an architect did the site plan work, locating the posts, the measurements. But the final step in the process would be to then return this site plan to the surveyor
Surveyor, okay.
and have them mark an as-built location, so the village has it on file on their survey this monument within the right of way. Yeah.
So you feel confident taking these yourself?
What's that?
You feel confident taking these locations yourself?
I did it with, with an architect, and then we also had John Shack, a member of the Parks and Space Committee, and had the planning board there as well. Yep. And we actually had a good opportunity to speak to a lot of the neighbors while we were doing it, and they were all very supportive and positive of what we were doing. So.
Yeah, I don't, I think that we should move forward with this. I don't have a, I don't think we should hold this up any longer. I think we also.
No, so I think it's great. They look beautiful. Neighbors are involved.
Yeah, I need a motion to approve the installation of the, of the access point markers.
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, no second? Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So you have approval.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Drew.
And Drew did a great job of speaking with the Harbor Committee just recently, so they're aware, they're gonna go look at the locations as well. You know, just with water access, you know, that we need there as well.
I think the posts are beautiful, by the way.
Yeah.
Really neat.
Really nice.
I love the crest up there. Pretty cool. Yep.
And we'll notify you guys once they're also installed, so you can go check them out.
And Drew, you said you spoke to the neighbors of all of these? I'm just wondering if we should maybe send them a notice to about what we're planning to do, too.
So we spoke to the neighbors at Dartmouth, they came out. Amherst, they came out. Notre Dame, they were not there. And John Street is the culvers next to it, and the other neighbor was not there. So two out of four of them.
Okay.
Yep.
Maybe we can just send them a, just send a notice to, just to let them, yeah.
You know, in moral communication, always better.
Not everybody, not everybody's on Zoom when we have these meetings or.
I don't know else we wanna do.
Been noticing that.
Really?
Yeah.
But we'll take care of that, Drew.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Great job.
So anything else, deputy mayor?
A couple of things. In addition, we had today or tomorrow, I can't remember which day it is, the Steinbeck House is being considered for National Historic. It's tomorrow. National Historic and State Historic Registry. And thanks again, Drew, and we submitted a letter of support. This board did, as well as Southampton Town. Hopefully, that'll go through. Also, the Justice Court, to follow up on what the mayor reported on, too. Activity is picking up. Vehicle traffic violations, there were a hundred and eighty-one in May that were opened. Parking, nine hundred. Tickets were issued. In addition, there were eight code violations. Next month, the next three months will be, the next three or four months will be our highest activity by far. So even though it's picked up some already, it's going to get much more active, just based on the history of this village over the next four months. So it's important that everybody remain courteous, especially with our TCOs. They have a tough job, and they're, they're doing very professional work, and we really appreciate what they do for us. In addition, we'll see later, we've, I think it's number five on the agenda today. We're, this is for the planning liaison. We have a planning employment position for consideration on this agenda for introduction, as well as a RFQ for planning consulting. They've been reviewed by our council, by the planning board chair, and by members of this board as well. I don't think we're ready for issuance or approval right away. Kate, could you help with the timing on when we would issue this?
Yeah, RFP for planning and consulting, one is next Thursday. We missed the deadline of getting that advertisement in the paper. And for the planner position in-house, we are just getting approval through civil service, providing them with the duty statements to make sure that that position can be created in the village.
And so we'll wait for all those approvals to take place before we issue. So that, that's, that's the full extent of my report.
Okay. Thank you, deputy mayor. That brings us to trustee Corsh with the sewer department, village grants, and the ZBA.
Thank you, mayor. I'll start with the sewer department for, the report for May. Total gallons received in the month was two million, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. We removed twenty-one thousand gallons of sludge. DMR reports were forwarded on six-five. Suffolk County DHS inspection, the next inspection is set for eight thirteen. And as always, the New York State DC inspection is open. We had no complaints. And the summary of operations, the plant is running well. It's under all its permitted levels, starting on May 16th. We're, we're currently operating on three basins. All grease traps are inspected. There's no report that any failed, so I'll take that as good news. Again, I'd like to thank everybody, all the restaurateurs of grease traps. This is, really has improved over the year. Benson pulled pump number two from the dry well for some repairs, and mixer number four is still at DP Electric for repair. That's taking a little longer than we anticipated, but we expect it back soon. The flow from April through June saw an increase of seventy-three thousand, or seven hundred and thirty-five thousand gallons, should I say, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand gallons. Grants will be getting with the grant writer to look at the CFA, the consolidated funding application for this year from New York State. We look forward to resubmitting the grant last year that didn't, that wasn't approved. We came very close in our follow-up meeting. We got some pointers. We'll look at that, and we'll be investigating any other grant opportunities or grant entities in the village that might be suitable. The ZBA is great committee, running well, and I have really nothing to report on that, and that does conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Corsh. That brings us to trustee Plum with Public Works, Board of Historic Preservation and Architectural Review, and the Environmental Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Mayor, from the Yardley. Main Street hanging flower baskets have arrived and been put up. Crosswalks around the village have been painted. Catch basin slash drain maintenance continues throughout the village. All roads continue to be swept. Grass cutting of road shoulders and parking lots continues. Asphalt repair and patching continues as needed. Tree pruning on village sidewalks and around traffic control devices has started. Paid parking signs have been moved pending correction. Is that right? Paid parking signs, do we correct them?
Yeah, we corrected that. We, we, we got new bigger signs that are more, better explanation, and they're bilingual.
I forgot that. Irrigation repair continues at Village Parks. Multitude of main street trees and parks completed. Cleaning and painting of antique light posts continues. Additional waste receptacles have been placed as needed. And that's the end of the DPW report. The ARB, as I've said in the last couple of meetings, will see some new faces after the organizational meeting on the seventh, seventh.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you. And then as from the Environmental Advisory Committee, Sag Harbor Transfer Station is, is open for food scraps. Apparently, they've gotten quite a few. Over three hundred pounds were collected in the first week of operation, which is great. Joan Butler, working with Half Shells for Habitat, has collected over eight hundred pounds of oyster shells from Lulu's and the American Hotel.
That's pretty cool.
They are taken to Suffolk Natural History Museum where they are cured, meaning let air out, bagged, and transported to become part of the new local oyster reef. They just dump them, make piles of artificial reefs, and skip the stuff, and started outreach to local restaurants and takeout businesses. At the moment, they discourage people from getting glassy forks and spoons and napkins unless people ask for them. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Plum. That brings us to trustee Kane with the Building Department, Harbor and Docks, and the Harbor Committee.
Okay, great. Thanks, mayor. I'm gonna start with Harbor and Docks. For, on the revenue side, we're running year-to-date about eleven percent ahead of last year. But actually, if you looked at May of twenty-four versus May of twenty-five, it was just fifty percent. So it's just, as we know, it flows, and once we get into July and August, that's when we're gonna see the uptake. You know, this, we have a lot of reservations, which is fantastic. We just need the good weather so that everyone will show. But, but as we know, Memorial Day ended up being busy. So just to give you some more, we did receive compliments with the Viking starlight on Long Wharf as people enjoy being able to have access to the larger party boat. They were just here in the month of May. The dock personnel have begun, just on a limited schedule, once we get into late June, that's when they'll, they'll really pick up. And one of our employees will be operating that second pump-out boat, so we're all set on that. And then, you know, for the Viking cruise line, on May 27th, they actually had moored in our mooring field, so the harbor masters moved them out to the designated location where they're supposed to be northeast of buoy twelve. They were very responsive, and after that, they've been in the right spot. So just for everyone to be aware, it seems to be a good relationship. There were eleven marine patrols conducted during the month. Swim buoys were placed at Haven's Beach for the upcoming season, so we're getting ready, and we conducted fourteen MSD inspections, and they've continued to be handing out the new zip ties. So these are the more heavy-duty ones because we had the issues in some of the boats where the heat had impacted the ones we had had last year. So we learned from being last year, first year, and so we're in pretty good shape. The one thing that is also interesting, that there were eleven environmental conservative law checks, which there were some summons that were issued, and that's basically under the bridge. We do have people who are fishing, and they're not following the rules of the right-sized fish, and so we're really trying to stay on top of that. So just for everyone to be aware, that's how.
Who conducts those checks?
Harbor masters.
Oh, the harbor master does.
Yeah. And we just, one thing that was noted also is on the North Haven side, there's been a lot of trash, so we don't control that. We share that information, and North Haven will have to take care of that, but there are people that are coming and fishing and picnicking and then not cleaning up after. So we're, we're gonna make sure that that's being adhered to, and actually, our guys have been cleaning it up on, you know, Sunday nights, Monday mornings.
That there are fences that we should, that's supposed to be installed there?
Well, that, we can't install the fence on the North Haven side. We want the fence to be replaced underneath the bridge.
On our side.
On our side. So we need to have that. It was up and it's been taken down. You know, now that the season's starting again, we really need to get that reinstalled, and that'll be helpful, you know, for safety reasons, as well as controlling the cleaning up part. So that's from the harbor side. And then from the building department, just to give you the numbers for the total receipt for May of twenty-five, it was fifty-six thousand four hundred in revenue. That was versus two hundred thousand for May of twenty-four. When we look at the pace that year-to-date where we are, twenty-four versus twenty-five, we're about nineteen percent behind at the moment. But we know, we have a lot of months to go, so we'll, we'll look to see that increase. I've asked Bruce Scovani, our code inspector, to come tonight because when we, he really is taking a lot as we start the busy time of year. And Bruce, if you wanna get up and just kinda summarize where we've done, because the changes are, you know, as the restaurateurs and everyone's getting ready, that, as well as applications for events, everything just keeps increasing. But the thing that I really asked Bruce to share with us tonight is to give us, since inception, where we are with all the rental permits, as well as the tree permits. So Bruce, why don't you?
Evening, mayor and board. Two thousand twenty-four, I'll do rental permits first. Two thousand twenty-four, one hundred and forty-eight were issued. Two thousand twenty-five, one hundred and fifty-four have been issued so far. The reason that that total is so much higher, even though we're only halfway through the year, is because we had the stipulation where a lease was required in order to issue them. Now that that was stricken, people have come forward saying, can we get them? We've actually been backlogging and going through who is missing the lease and contacting those homeowners to get the rental permits in place that way. There have also been four owner-occupied rental permits. Those are all this year.
Bruce's question, those are two-year permits, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so these are all brand-new. We're not at two years yet for the renewals, so these are all first-time permits.
Right, so the total is outstanding. It's the total.
A hundred and forty-eight plus one hundred and fifty-four.
Yeah, so we're over three hundred.
That's pretty good.
We still do have some, we still do have a good amount outstanding. Again, tracking down leases. There's been some homes that have actually changed hands, you know, within the year and a half, year and five months so far. So we are still working on them, but we've definitely made progress. The total's already up this year as it was the last year, so.
So that's what I just.
Everybody in place. Most people that submitted them weren't aware that the lease agreement was stricken from the code, so we're just trying to.
How many homes are in the village?
Two thousand, I believe.
So if we're up to three hundred now, and if we really look at two thousand twenty-four, and maybe this year as well, it's still a little early, but rentals have been down, so it's interesting. People really aren't coming unless they know their house is being rented. So I would say it's really proven to be a good success, and the new safety that we have for these rental homes is really the goal that we wanted to meet.
The other good thing is the rollover there, the one forty-eight the first year, one hundred and fifty-eight, so that, you know, that one forty-eight will come due again next year. Yeah.
Exactly.
How are we with the affordable housing, the income and rent rates? Does this apply to any of these?
The accessory, the accessory dwellings?
Yeah.
So most of them, not many have been issued because of the code change that's, I believe, on.
It's off, we, we're gonna be able to adopt that tonight, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't even put those figures in because it was such a gray area. Also included in this is multi-dwellings and apartments. It's one rental permit since it's one property, but then they're signing off on, you know, let's say, three or four units within that property. But just to be clear, it is one property, is it?
Got you.
Tree permits. Since inception, permitted with letters from an ISA-certified arborist and inspection by the building department, I'm pretty much majority myself, thirty tree removal permits issued, ten field appearance tickets issued, one, and there's one pending. Now, you gotta remember that the permits are only for people that wanna take down a tree for no reason, well, for more light on their pool, or, you know, to open their yard, whatever. So since doing this, a lot of the big companies are coming forward with, hey, Bruce, can you meet me on-site? Can you just come and take a look? You know, what do you think about this tree? What do you think about that tree? Like, the inspections are, there's a lot of inspections. So these are just the thirty trees that have been approved, or thirty properties, I'm sorry. One permit may have two trees on a property. These all, these numbers also don't reflect the ones tied in with the building permit. I didn't wanna skew numbers, so we have building permit numbers. This just is, these are associated with building permits.
And but these include trees that are deemed to be dangerous, or?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes, they're in, they're in that number. An ISA letter. So if a certified arborist comes to me and gives me pictures, a letter, this tree is decaying, you know, there's twenty percent of the canopy left, so on and so forth, we deem it dead or diseased, therefore, there is no permit.
Bruce, so you also, sorry.
Go ahead.
You also have the ability to issue waivers in certain situations as well. The, the numbers of inspections you're reporting include the times when you're inspecting, but there's no permit issued, or?
No, this is just, this is, yeah, this is just from the database.
And can you give a sense directionally of how many more times you're inspecting without, I mean, is?
Yeah, so for each of these, so for each of these thirties, it's at least a review. Some reviews, I do just by pictures, documentation. I mean, it's obvious. I would say out of the thirty, at least half I go on-site just to confirm. Actually, let's say twenty out of thirty, two-thirds of on-site to confirm. What I refer to in the coenforcement report as technical assistance in the tree world is going out, meeting, saying, you know, this is good, this isn't good. Oh, this brush, it's under twelve inches. I would say at least double thirty.
Okay. So that's where the good news is.
Each inspection, I'm sorry, once they're taken down, I go back and inspect to say, okay, that, you know, twenty-inch maple tree in the front yard that you applied for was the one that was taken down. twenty inch maple tree in the front yard that you applied for was the one that was taken down. So this is double the amount of required inspections and then double that number to the amount of onsite, so.
Gotcha.
But I, I mean, the good news, I mean, we're keeping Bruce, we're keeping Bruce busy, number one.
Hey, that's a lot of extra visits.
I think the thing that we all can be, you know, just seeing how proactive all the tree companies are. And, you know, we may have some people here, there that are doing things as we know that they shouldn't, but that's very much the minority. It's more the exception. So I would say we've seen some nice success with this.
I think it's great that the tree companies that are, are.
That's the most important part.
Participating because they're delivering the message to the owners.
Are coming to me no matter what.
Yeah.
Even if it's, you know, we're, we're clearing a yard. If it's just, you know, weeds and, and just brush. We're clearing the yard at, you know, whatever address, they even give us the heads up. So they've been very, most of the tree companies that work here have been very, very communicative.
Great, that's good to hear.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Okay, so that concludes the department reports. I need a motion to accept the reports.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corsh, I need a second. Seconded by trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Still approved. Before we get to public comments, I wanted to ask Jesse Matsawoka to come forward and give us a report on the progress of the Hampton Hopper.
Little more. Jesse Matsawoka, Twenty One Mount Mizzou Drive, performing on the progress of the Hopper pilot program. In speaking with Hampton Hopper, they had not such great news on sticking to their budget, which originally they were proposing about seventy five thousand retail, and they were going to come down cost wise under that number. With the requested hours and everything like that, they've come in at about a hundred and five thousand dollars. And these were the requests for us to have full non, no breaks from ten AM to eight PM, sorry, ten to nine, ten to nine PM, ten AM to nine PM. Which we've gone back and said that he needs to do better on that note, right? We did confirm that we did get the forty five thousand dollars from New York Assemblyman, Tommy John Scovoni.
I, I have something to add to that. But we'll, I'll speak about it when you conclude your report. Because I had a conversation with Tommy John.
Okay. Hopefully something amazing.
No, well.
So with even securing that, the hundred five just doesn't make sense. So we had asked what were ways for us to be able to control that number? One of them was a request to have the bus parked here in the village because it would be parked in West Hampton, so we'd have to drive to West Hampton and then drive it back after the shift. So we, I, I mean, I did openly just say we can use Village, one of the properties, whether it's the gravel lot or the, we have multiple lots, I'm pretty sure we can find somewhere for this that it's happened. Sorry if I overspoke in that, that sense, but. So that was one thing, which saved us about seven percent of cost. Then the next thing was to create a break. If we created a break, a non one hour shift break, it would reduce it even more. So we've got the price down to about eighty thousand dollars overall. And that is specifically for just July first to pretty much September first.
Oh, so it's two months?
Two months.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah, which is about what the Montauk Group also does, right? It's, it's the last week of June through to late. So we are still trying our best to work with the Hampton Hopper in order to secure also advertising dollars to reduce this budget as well. But we would need to start working on that and get approvals to move things along in order for that to actually happen. So overall, I still feel that it's a worthy cause for the village to have some kind of transit system for the residents to be able to get to these great places that the village has to offer, including that of Masheshman Park, Havens Beach, the library, the Welling Museum, Main Street, and all these other great places. So I will still work on this and try and get those numbers down along with adding in additional possible transit options that might come. And there's like the circuit that East Hampton utilizes, there's a lot of these other things that we are still approaching, and I would like to be able to kind of work into this program.
So, you know, originally, we, we, the village has not budgeted for this. In other words, when the, the numbers were originally discussed with me, it was around fifteen thousand dollars. And I was like, well, we could somehow move things around to get these funds. But that, since we've been talking to the Hopper, you know, we've gone from seventy two to a hundred thousand, back to eighty thousand. I had a discussion with Tommy John, you know, time is of the essence here. And for him to commit, I felt, for him to commit that forty five thousand dollars to this project when we really haven't budgeted this extra money, would, is, and take that money away from the first congressional district, which is what he, we felt that that was, that was too much of a risk for a pilot program. So that doesn't mean that we're not going to continue to explore this, this opportunity and doing a pilot program. I have other people that I'm going to sit down and meet with. We spoke about the electric cars and possibly using that. And that could fall more into the budget that we discussed originally. But I think that these numbers that we're getting back from the Hopper are just, just way too much. And we haven't, like I said, we haven't budgeted for this at that price because the village ultimately would have to lay out all the monies. And that's right now for us to do that for a pilot program, I feel is not and not, and not to risk that money for the first congressional district. I don't want to have Tommy John put his neck out there for something like this and then we don't lose, use the money. Because as we know, with the grants, if that happens, that's going to hurt us.
Yep.
Yeah.
Big time. So I think we should continue to explore this. We can continue to see if we can get a cheaper rate. I think that the possibility of using an electric vehicle to do this, I've, I discussed it last year with, with Roveloop, and they were willing to do it for nothing at that time. The problem is they need a sponsor for the vehicle. So I'm going to set up a meeting, we'll, we'll set it up together, we'll reapproach them and see where, where, what they're willing to do.
I, I want to add in a couple of points. One of the main reasons why the Hampton Hoppers prices increases, I just want to mention, three hundred percent on insurance.
Right.
Right, which I'm seeing as a business operator here, all of my insurances are going up, you know, no longer in the fourteen percent range, but hundreds of percent. So that is definitely something that, you know, might be something for us to think about. If there was other insurance options that we could offer to the Hampton Hopper, then they might be able to give us a better rate. So I'm also shopping out the insurance side of this. He did say that labor was up thirty percent for his drivers and also securing an additional shuttle specifically for this project. So all of those things added up to, to this.
Would starting a little later, you mentioned that it was a ten AM start through nine PM?
Yes.
Does it, does it make much of a difference to start a little later in the morning?
So.
Village tends to be a little quieter at that time of the day and sort of picks up around noon.
Absolutely. And one of the, the reasons for us starting that early was to get in the workforce.
Gotcha, okay.
For that. And so we were trying to play around with different ideas of whether or not starting earlier or later would help adjust it, but no matter when, where we played with that number, the driver still needed a break.
Okay.
So that was the whole thing.
I'll use your mention, I'll use your mention of the workforce just to say we have completed the contract with the school, correct? For the two parking lots, and we're moving ahead with the placards and the signage for there. So that's all in the works. So that's forty eight new spaces. Which is more than half the, the Gaspar lot. So that's all happening, just so people know.
Which is all great things that will hopefully.
All these little pieces will come together.
I would say to continue doing what you're doing, Jesse, and we'll bring in this, the, the electric car. And if it's something that the village has to pay to wrap, if it's, that cost is between ten and fifteen thousand to do that, I think it could be an opportunity for us to, you know.
Maybe we can offer charging facilities as well, since we have that.
That, that was one of the reasons why the circuit had declined to operate in Sag Harbor Village. And this is before we had the EV stations. That, that they needed the charging stations in order to have those vehicles here. So now that we do have charging stations, then a lot of these companies can be considered within.
I did offer that to them at the time, and they, they said they didn't need it. They would do it, I was told they would do it for nothing, but let's reapproach.
Yeah.
And see what we can come up with. I don't see the cars out there. And that tells me that he didn't get advertising to wrap the cars, but if that's the case, maybe the village can step in and do something like that.
Jesse, what was that three hundred percent insurance? Do you have a dollar associated with that?
So we've requested for the specific dollar. I, he had openly said it was about thirty thousand dollars, but.
Huge.
But again, you know, and I've, I've spoken about this many times at these board meetings. Something needs to be done with tort reform. All these municipalities are paying more money for insurance. Now it's affecting the ability for us to expand and do other things. It's just going, it's, it's unchecked. Somebody needs to step up. And, you know, I spoke to Tommy John about it. At the state legislature, you know, this is a problem, and you guys need to address it. Because it's getting out of control.
So a third of the cost is insurance.
Yeah, exactly.
It's across the board. Apparently like car parts cost more, repairs, for instance. The, the garage labor costs more. I think there are some legitimate cost increases, but three hundred percent.
What I'm, what I, we have an East End supervisors, mayor supervisors meeting. I'm going to request that they send a letter to the state legislature asking them to do something about this, tort reform, or to put, push something forward that is becoming, because we're all sharing, all the municipalities are in the same boat, our costs are going up. We're at the two and a half cap, percent cap. Meanwhile, our.
In a ten percent world.
Right, in a ten percent world, our costs are now thirty percent for insurance.
Yeah.
I mean, it's unsustainable.
Thank you for your time.
That brings us to our public comments. Fifteen minute public session input for comments and questions. Limit three minutes per speaker on any of the reports you just heard. Yes, Kate?
Getting published, strive Brucey. I was just wondering about the of the tree legislation. And has, have we put in the tree legislation that the landscapers are responsible if a tree comes down? It's not there yet.
No.
Because what my suggestion is, Aileen has, I think.
Right, but we were, we're seeing how it operates and by all accounts.
Well, I was just wondering about that, whether it has gotten through yet.
No, no, we haven't, we hadn't considered that yet. Aileen had mentioned it. Yeah, which is always better because voluntary doesn't require, if people are really doing something voluntary because the right thing to do, it doesn't require the inspections and the oversight and the follow through. It's a much simpler way of doing it. So I think Bruce's report was really informative to that tonight. And it's something that we can consider if we feel it's necessary. I, that's my take on that. I'm not sure how the board.
I would agree.
I was speaking of insurance.
Bruce wants to speak to it.
Oh.
Bruce?
What is this in reference to, like?
Bruce, I think, I think, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kate. I think the, what Kate is talking about is we were looking to hold the person that actually takes the tree down, the company itself responsible.
As opposed to the owner.
The Aileen, yeah.
That was one of the suggestions.
Justice to amend this per current tree legislation.
Yeah, so this would, I mean, this would be a justice court matter because I can't write a ticket to book.
Right, yeah, so it goes with the homeowner.
People with the same violation.
And then the justice court can find, right, can find.
And just, and it's easier to track down the property owner because then we can hold them accountable more. I mean, there's been one instance where it's a total fly by night company. I mean, they literally went in on Saturday, told the cops they weren't going to stop and no marks, like you can't do anything. They don't present an ID.
So you're, you're better off than having the homeowner?
Yeah.
Because you know where they are.
Certainly there's a cost to it, the homeowner.
Yeah, it's a cost.
And as you say, you can't charge two people with the same.
The homeowner wants to then have the, have the company paid, that's, that's up to them, that's a civil matter.
That's why I think is, that's why the tree companies are abiding by the law, because ultimately that is what's going to happen. We want to put the liability there because they'll have the insurance. When the homeowner should say, you should have taken this tree down, didn't you know the law? It's like any, any.
We also need to get advice from the village attorney as well as to what, how that works.
But it seems to be working, like you said, right?
Listen, if we get compliance, I'm all for compliance over laws.
That's the key.
Yeah. More compliance, fewer laws, we'd all be better off.
Yes. Do we have any other public comment? Okay, that brings us to a public hearing. We have a local law to amend Sag Harbor Village Code, chapter two thirty five, streets and sidewalks, two thirty five dash eight, displaying goods and wares to allow for a limited display of goods and wares on village sidewalks. Need a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll move it.
Motion by?
Second.
Deputy Mayor Hay, seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed. Okay, the public hearing is now open. This was a local law that we're amending. As far, I've been working with Bruce on this, where you see businesses out front that have little displays or small displays. Evidently, it's not allowed in our code. So what happens is somebody will complain, Bruce has to go out, tell them to put all the stuff away. And then evidently, over time, it gets back onto the sidewalk.
No.
So what I'm trying to do here, and I'm, we've been looking at the code overall to, to correct some of these issues is to make it easier for them to do that. They just have to file a permit. Bruce, you know, and I feel that as long as it's not dangerous, it's not blocking a means of exit or entrance, and it's back away from the sidewalk where there's foot traffic, it's acceptable. Of course, Bruce has the overall call on that. So, yes, Nada?
I'm just curious, is the hours, I mean, that you've got it from April to November. Who came up with that? What was behind that?
I think it's just a timeframe that that was always there, I think.
It's in the code, I think.
Do you feel you should, that it should be changed, Nada, or what's your opinion?
Thought about it.
All right, well, you figure in the winter time, right? I mean, this is more geared towards the spring and the summer. That's true, that's a good point.
Harvest, Christmas.
That's a good point. We could, Harbor Frost.
Harbor Frost, I think you're part of that.
My birthday.
That's why we have public comment, so.
Maybe just, just be all you want and just make it easier.
Change it to all year round.
I think you should, if you're going to do it.
So we can hold off on adopting it and then make those changes.
Have they underlined the new stuff?
What's that?
Underline in here, the new scope?
Yes, yes.
It's like, it's clause eleven.
The other, the other thing that we're going to be working on, and I don't think it's in this law, is the small, the little the little board signs, the little.
A frame.
Yeah, A frame signs that you see. I feel personally, as long as there, there's no artwork or anything on it, it's just an informational sign, as most of them, almost all of them are. They should be allowed. In the code right now, it's not allowed, believe it or not. And, or to get that sign, you need to go before, you also need to go before the architectural review board, which I feel is very cumbersome. So that's the next thing that I'll be, will be working on.
Sandwich board.
Yes, there you go. That's the term, Kate. Thank you. I had a moment there. Thanks. So I think that we'll hold off adopting this and, and make those changes. Thank you, Nada, for your input, to make it year round. Okay, counsel? All right, so we'll, we'll table that till next month. That brings us to local law to amend Village Code, chapter fifty five.
Do we have to move to table it?
I would make that, yeah.
Yeah, let's, we have a motion.
Second.
Okay. That was quick. A local, aye, all in favor? Local law is tabled to next month. A local law to amend Village Code, chapter fifty five, video conferencing to include the required access to public records code provision pursuant to foil.
I'll move it.
Motion to open?
I'll second.
Public hearing is now open.
This is just to comply with law, right?
Yes. Make sure that we're.
And the state law already applies to us anyway.
Right. This is just an added level of protection. Any, any public comment on this? Okay, a motion to close the public hearing?
Move it.
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Public hearing is closed. Motion to adopt.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, seconded by trustee Corsh. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Local law is now adopted. That brings us to a local law, Village Code, two sixty five dash forty one, parking prohibited during all hours to prohibit parking on the south side of Grant Street. We discussed this. We have cars. We have cars parking on both sides of Grand Street, especially during when school is open. And it's very difficult to get emergency vehicles down there. So what we're going to do is to have parking on only one side of that street, similar to what we did. On Glover Street, so. I need a motion to open.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kors, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor? Opposed. The public hearing is now open. Do we have any public comment?
This this is intended to run the full length of Grand Street all the way from Madison through Eastville.
Madison.
To Montauk.
Madison to.
It goes up to Hilton Eastville.
So it's basically, yeah, it's basically the area behind the school and it doesn't go all the way to.
I think in the bill it just said to Montauk extension.
To Montauk.
It doesn't extend down that little spot of James Place, but it goes to.
But it goes, does it stop at Eastville or Montauk?
Montauk Avenue.
Yeah, because that's the main part.
Yes.
Perfect.
Any other public comments? Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, I have a second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Public hearing is now closed. They have a motion to adopt.
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Now is approved for a local law. That brings us to a continued public hearing. This is the local law to amend village code three hundred dash nine point one two. Accessory apartments in the R twenty zoning district. And three hundred dash two point two definitions accessory apartment to clarify code divisions. I think we already opened this public hearing.
Yes.
Do we have any comment from the public on this? Motion to close the public hearing. Do we want to do that now? Okay, Mr. Ellsworth.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Nelson Puppin Borhees has provided the board with an environmental assessment form. Uh, that consists of three parts. Uh, part one is a description of the proposal that's before the board tonight. Part two is a checklist to evaluate whether the proposed. Legislation entails potential significant impacts. And part three is the recommended determination of significance. Uh, so walking through it, uh, part one is a thirteen page form. It's a standard form. Uh, the long form, uh, environmental assessment form was used because. This is considered a type one action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECA. So we had to fill out the long form and we have a little attachment. That uh, goes into some detail on what's proposed by the board for adoption tonight. Part two, if you go through that, it's a thirteen page form. It has eighteen. Uh, areas of environmental uh, impact. Um, and uh, in evaluating those potential impacts. Uh, the recommendation is that all of the impacts are either not applicable or they're relatively minor. Uh, and the purpose of this is if you identify any potentially large impacts. Uh, you would be required to go into more detail to determine if those impacts are considered significant. Which is the key word on the SECA. Um, and then part three, which is the the key to the whole thing here tonight. Uh, the form itself is only two pages and makes a recommendation for what's known as a negative declaration. Uh, conclusion that adoption of the proposed legislation will not entail significant impacts. Uh, and then that's accompanied by a um. Uh, an eight page attachment that uh. Provides a discussion uh. Of the proposed action, uh, adding on to what's in the part one. But also, uh, in order to determine uh, the potential for that impact. Since this is what the board is really considering tonight is just the adoption of legislation. So that does by itself, that doesn't entail any significant impacts. But we're required on the SECA to look. Um, uh, to see if the adoption of the legislation may trigger. Some new development or something like that that might cause uh, impacts in the future. So what uh, we did, which is a standard planning practice, is a build out analysis. Based on the information we can compile. Uh, so we identified all of the uh. Properties that are potentially affected by the legislation. Uh, as of right now, uh, the uh, the law allows. Uh, our twenty properties with a lot with of seventy feet or more. To make an application for an accessory apartment. What the main part of what the board is considering tonight is to eliminate that uh, restriction. And allow any R twenty parcel to make an application. Uh, so we identified all of the um, parcels in the village that have less than seventy. All the R twenty parcels in the village that had less than the twenty uh, seventy foot width. Just to get an idea of how many parcels we're talking about. And then we uh, obtained information from the village building inspector on what activity there has been. On accessory apartments in the past. Uh, and they're really since in the uh, the past several years since the board adopted. Uh, the most recent provision allowing for lots with seventy. Uh, uh, as little as seventy foot width to make an application. Uh, there's only been a handful of applications. So we took that into consideration and we also looked at what. Uh, has happened in the town of East Hampton in terms of what. Uh, their program for accessory apartments uh, has uh. Um, provided in 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 terms of new apartments. Uh, so they also, it's like one percent of the parcels, the eligible parcels have uh. Um, uh, actually built this accessory apartments. So uh, based on the total number of parcels in the village that would be. Become eligible under the new legislation. Um, we made a conservative estimate uh, that uh, over the the course of maybe five years. Uh, twenty uh, properties in the village would uh. Uh, make applications and obtain uh, permits for accessory apartments, just to do the analysis of what the impacts would be. Uh, and on that basis, we went through the eighteen parameters that are in the part two checklist. And that's what the attachment is mostly, uh, impact on land. Uh, so the apartments uh, are on already developed lots. So it wouldn't really um, uh, result in a lot of new land disturbance. Uh, plus these, uh, if there are twenty apartments, which we think is conservative, we think it's gonna be less than that. Um, uh, it would be scattered throughout the village, so the uh. Um, the overall impact on the land would be relatively minor. Uh, impact on surface waters. Uh, the uh, again, most of the R twenty uh, uh, parcels in the village are inland. Uh, so they wouldn't have a direct impact on surface waters. Uh, and uh, there are regulations in place to control stormwater, uh, to prevent indirect impacts on surface waters. Uh, groundwater's accessory apartments would be governed by the Suffolk County Department of Health Standards. Uh, if they, uh, if there's a need for a uh, sanitary system upgrade. Uh, and again, it's, we're talking, uh, our uh, build out analysis was based on twenty accessory apartments throughout the entire village. Uh, impact on flooding, uh, the uh, most of the R twenty parcels are out of the floodplain. And any ones that undergo development would be subject to the requirements of the uh, the. Um, the village's zoning code, uh, to prevent uh, flooding impacts. Um, I'm skipping through the to the major ones, aesthetic resources. Um, some of these apartment may actually be internal to the um, the residence, so you wouldn't even notice it was there. Uh, some of them may be uh, repurposed accessory structures, so the structure is already there. Uh, would have a minor uh, effect on aesthetics at even at that particular location. And again, for twenty um, apartments throughout the village that we conservatively estimate. May result from this legislation, uh, the impact would be minus. Uh, historic and archaeological resources, uh, in looking at archaeological resources first. These, again, these are on already developed lots, so there is a uh, minimal. Uh, potential for impacts on archaeological resources. And any uh, uh, proposal would have to go through the architectural review board. To make sure that it's consistent with their standards. Um, uh, transportation, we actually did a um, trip generation analysis for the twenty apartments. Uh, there are not. Uh, there's not a code in the traffic engineering manual uh, for accessory apartments as such. So uh, we use the uh, two um, what they called uh, land use codes. Uh, that are closest to that, which are single family homes and single uh, single family detached and single family attached homes. Uh, and as you can imagine, those are probably gonna generate more traffic than a accessory apartment, which is typically smaller. Uh, so village wide, the maximum trip generation would be uh, uh, based on the standards. That traffic engineers use is twenty seven vehicles in the peak hour. Fewer trips generated uh, at other times of the day. Uh, so one car uh, village wide uh, uh, every thirty minutes. Uh, so that would uh, uh, indicates that there would be a relatively minor impact on traffic. Um, consistency with community plans, uh, this legislation is uh, aligns with the. Uh, and that's the whole reason why the this board has decided to uh. Um, take a look at this legislation is to provide opportunities for more affordable housing in the village. Um, and consistency with the community characters. Um, this will um, again, have minimal uh, community character. Uh, mostly is related to aesthetic resources and as discussed previously, that there's gonna be a minor impact on aesthetic resources. Uh, so uh, the impact on the community character, twenty units. Conservatively estimated village wide would be minor. Um, we also looked at what the uh, generation of schoolchildren would be. Um, based on uh, again, twenty units. Uh, and it would be uh, uh, minimal increase, just a handful of students throughout all of the grades in the school system. Uh, so that is a quick summary of uh, going through the eighteen um, impact parameters. And certainly if you have any questions, uh, uh, I will see if I can answer them.
Do any, does anybody have any questions for John?
I do not.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ellsworth.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
We have any any other public comments before we close? Motion to close public comments?
Move, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Public comments are closed. I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kors, have a second? Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Local law is now approved. So that brings us to our discussion items. There's nothing listed, but I wanted to briefly discuss with the trustees. About combining, I think we have an organizational meeting on the seventh and then the board meeting on the eighth. What I'd like to do is combine those two meetings and get it over with on the seventh, if that's okay with the board.
Sound of that.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
That brings us to our action items.
So July seventh.
July seventh will be the organizational and the village board meeting.
That'll be an afternoon meeting?
That's at twelve.
Still have an early board meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so July seventh noon.
Okay, that brings us to.
So that's a Monday, right?
Yes, okay, okay. That brings us to our action items, resolution authorizing application to the town of Southampton. Trustees for a dock extension for the rowing club. What we're doing here is becoming the lead agency here. It's going to be our dock. And the rowing club is gonna pay for it and they're gonna use it when they can. But it will also be used by, you know, anybody that wants to launch a kayak or.
It's on village property.
It's on village property.
Right.
So I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Resolution for Mayor Gardella to sign the agreement with Calpine Energy Solutions LLC. This is the energy contracts. Mr. Ed Carey's here from NYMEP. If you want to talk about it briefly or, I believe.
Good news for everyone. I mean, I know down here before, uh, as mayor, as you stated, you know, crisis of. Very heavy commodities going up and up and up and up. And he stated it correctly. It's out of control. Um, we're here to 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 lasso that and put a harness on it and stop that spending. So uh, with life, your breaks over the last four years have gone up and down like a like a roller coaster, literally. Peaks, valleys every single month. And you average around around eleven four over the course of that time. Um, we're bringing in Calpine Energy. They have local generation online. There, we're gonna be doing a seasonal hedge and uh, we're. Uh, when we first gave the proposal, I think we were at nine eight, markets come down. And uh, we're actually today, we renegotiated uh, the with with Calpine, came around nine six. In uh, just sitting right here, and it was my colleague, uh, a couple of things we pointed out. Uh, from January until June, January paid twelve four, February paid twelve oh three, March thirteen cents, April twelve eighteen. May twelve uh, twelve two, and June is is thirteen cents. So we're bringing that down, uh, down to about a nine six number.
Excuse me, that's nine six cents per kilowatt hour, correct?
Yeah, this is on a seagull, so we're gonna start off with fifty percent of it hedged. And then get into, make it into July, we'll go over about seventy five eighty and then come back uh, in the in the fall, around fifty percent and then. December, January, February. To me, uh, December, January, we'll be at eighty percent and then come back down to fifty. But just uh, locking up a percent of your load is gonna save you over twenty one thousand to twenty two thousand dollars a year. Um, but over the course of the contract, we we only anticipate that to be about sixty five thousand dollars in savings to the channel. Um, as we progress further, we're gonna be giving recommendations on, uh, maybe we might take on more of a hedge. But we wanted to start slow, uh, you know, it came to you, I guess, I'm guessing maybe February, I mean, my. We we sort of described everything. You guys didn't vote with that. Uh, the mayor and and your attorneys, we've spoken in length about this. Um, you have a a very good opportunity to save your constituents money.
I agree, and I was recently up at the NICOM convention upstate and. You know, everybody that I spoke to about your company says it's, you know, they've saved money, so.
Can you give a very brief. A synopsis of how you do this?
How we do this, yeah. Yeah, I'm I'm trying to get the elevator speed that normally wants to get out of here, like uh. But I, New York state has been a deregulated state since, uh, I believe, uh, nineteen ninety six. So you're approaching about thirty years of deregulation. And uh, and we do this this program all throughout the state. It's in Buffalo, Syracuse, Rochester, Potsboro, Albany, White Plains. Uh, you downstate, uh, you know, uh, we're there in in every single zone.
You got all this, I just want to. Where's the magic?
Where's the magic? Well, being that it's a deregulated state, uh, your utility is is P S E N G. P S E N G is they deliver power. They don't generate power. They pick up A and they deliver to B. So it is illegal for a utility to give you a fixed cost. They cannot do it. They're not allowed to do it. So that's why it fluctuates uh, all over the place. Long Island being Zone K, you could always use this with natural gas. Natural gas, you could go in and say whatever, this is in terms, you could say, you know, gas is trading at between. Forty cents a therm or fifty cents a therm, whatever it might be, and you could lock in a rate, say thirty nine, you're beating the utility. And then Ukraine came and the market went crazy and people really sort of learned about energy because they they couldn't afford it. And uh, so you could lock in gas. Long Island, you you could not do this until about two years ago. Um, we asked, Life Path, it has this black box of how they price it.
I remember this.
And we 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 went after them and we petitioned to the Public Service Commission. They even gave us the keys, opened that black box and we came in and every energy company out there said, we don't do business in oil. Zone K, we cannot do this. So three of the largest energy company, Constellation being the largest, Energy being number two, said, we do not do business in. In in uh, Zone K. Calpine, because they have generation assets on Long Island, J F K Airport, Stony Brook. Calpine, because they have generation assets on Long Island, JFK Airport, Stony Brook, um, Bethpage. They have all these different generation assets. They can use the P-C-G bonds as an importer and an exporter. So they were able to, to do this undercut the utility. I mean, we're all buying this power up from the, the New York ISO. That's where it's all coming. That's the bathtub that everyone puts their, their company gets the energy from. And we were able to secure, uh, the energy from an ISO through Calpine and, uh, and get you a, a very substantial discount.
That, that power plant in Fort Jefferson, for instance, is not owned by LIF?
Power, power plants, uh.
In Fort Jefferson, you know, the.
North Haven, I think they, they have a, a financial interest in, but that's the wholesale market and the retail market are too volatile abilities. They're not allowed to talk to each other. So you have a wholesale market that generates power that goes right up to the, the, the New York ISO. And then, or it could go to really any, they're just generating KWH. Majority of that is going to the, the New York ISO. But they're not allowed to do, uh, something with, with PSA or LIF, uh, retail. They're not allowed to do that. Um.
So what this should do, we did a, we did a model out on this. It's, this is a three-year contract. And we did a model out and it's going to save us probably 20, 20 to $21,000 a year, plus.
Even more. I mean, they, right now, so I think.
So it'll save.
So we're hedging.
It's lock, it's locking us in at a lower rate.
It's hedging.
Yeah.
This is just for you, it's not for residents.
No, this is for the municipality.
Yeah, yeah. And this is for a commercial account. This is not for residential.
And all places really going to help is Suis Treatment Plant.
That's correct.
The biggest user of electricity in the village. Um, that can make a huge difference.
Yes. So this gives us stability and it saves us money.
Let's do it.
I think that's the key. It gives us stability so we can budget for this over a three-year period. But you said we're hedging 50% of the commodity costs for the kilowatts?
We, we, yeah. The way we proposed this, we wanted to be as conservative. We didn't want to do, we didn't want to lock up 100%.
Because the market fluctuates and it might go lower too, right?
Right.
There's always a possibility. Yeah, correct. I mean, like, you know, I, I, uh, there is a possibility, but from what we've seen in the last five years.
It's already happened since the last.
It's happened right now.
Well, it went up.
Electricity is, if you.
Went down.
The newspaper says every day, uh, these data centers are gobbling up air.
Right.
Yes.
So building a data center takes two years. Building a generation takes five to 10. It's not going to catch up.
It's not equalling.
No, no. We're going here and this is where we are right now. This is where they want it to get. I have no clue on how we're going to get up here.
So question about the term of the contract. It's a three-year contract. Given the time that you just given for, um, supply constraints that'll hit the system. Is there a chance, I mean, right now it's a three-year term. Is that a fixed term? Is that's it? We're locked into that three-year term? Can we extend during the course of the contract?
Yeah, I mean, they, I mean, these are energy companies. I mean, everything at one point is, is, uh, this is a start. Are they negotiable to some degree? Uh, you know, it is that there is a, a push and shove here. Uh, so we would have to, we do it all the time. If people want to, uh, if you want to dump the contract, then we have to sell it. Most likely there will be a loss. Uh, but majority of the time people do, they do want to blend and extend. Uh, and they want to extend out and, uh, they'll get a little bit identical to a morning, something.
And another question around that is so, um, we have a, you said 50% is how you're going to start. Are you going to say start with a three-year term or for the first year?
Annual.
The, 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 right now, the way it's set up, uh, it's a, it's a 36-month contract, three years. And, uh, right now we're starting off just a 50% hedge.
And that for the entire three years?
No, it's a seasonal hedge.
The purchase, yeah, the purchases you're doing don't, isn't for the full term of the contract, right? You're purchasing seasonally or annually or the commodities you're purchasing are seasonally?
Well, we're starting with 50.
Yep.
Then in August, we're going up to 75. Then in September, we're going back down to 50. And then in December, the more dangerous months when prices spike and daylight savings, you know, you turn on your lights at four o'clock here. Now you turn it at six o'clock. Uh, so the, the price of power goes up during the winter time. So we're taking on 80% of that hedge. And then traditionally, you know, the price comes down again. There's less risk in, in the springtime. And it'll go back down to 50. And then we'll, we'll, we'll do that, that same seasonal hedge again in 26, 27. And then we'll do 27, 28.
And then as your hedges shift over the seasons, will that change our commodity costs as well dur- during the term of the three-year term contract?
Well, I, you know, like, uh, it could, like, uh, I mean, we're, we could increase this hedge. Uh, we're not recommending that. Uh, we think this is a, a very good way to start off on this. If it's the first time. Um, you know, we, we wanted to come here being conservative and saying, uh, you know, how much risk do you want to take on? And, um, some people want to say, like, you know, we'll do 100%. We don't recommend that. We said let's start off at 50 and then, then.
What I'm asking is how much predictability are you giving us to the commodity cost of the three-year term?
I'm giving you a predictability of the, of the, the term of the contract, 36 months.
Okay, so it's going to be the same kilowatt hour price for the whole 36 months?
Correct.
How you hedge it is up to you.
Correct.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a contract, so we, um, we, we, I mean.
We've got a lot of blanks in what we have right now, so that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I mean, if you, if you know Calpine, I mean, they're, they're a mammoth, mammoth company.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, you know, this, this to them, uh, they did not want to take it at first. They thought it was too small. But because of the NICOM relationship, uh, we said you have to. And, uh, they said they, they agreed. They said we, we want their, Calpine is, is, is getting involved in Long Island because they want growth. They've just taken on, uh, the town of Hempstead. They took the whole over, all, uh, 47 million KWs. So Hempstead's moving forward. Uh, NASA County is, uh, is also has given us the green light to go forward. And they're about, you know, 160 million, um, KWs. They want to move forward. Um, so this is, I mean, all that along is now in percent. I mean, we're talking East Hampton, all these different townships who were attended NICOM. Have all sort of jumped in and say, we, we want this. The pricing and the, the out of control spending on Long Island has had enough.
Are we getting the same rate as all those other towns?
We say.
Are we getting the same rate as all those other towns?
Uh, what they, uh, no, you got a lower rate. I mean, like, Hempstead came in at, uh, at 9.7, so you guys got 9, 9.6. And they're, they're 46 million bigger than you and you got a better rate than them. It was just, it was a market. I mean, uh, what helped was, you know, the, the weather came through, the, all that hot air. The last three days have just been pretty cold. I mean, I'm, I'm in Cheltenham, people are lighting fires, like, and you're smelling it in the street, you're like that. But, uh, so that cold, that, you know, took a nice little.
We hit it at the right time.
They said, uh, hey, you know, we're at 9.8 this morning.
Better be 9.6.
Yes.
This is going to done now.
Yes, I already signed the papers. You just got to give me the go-ahead.
Okay. All right.
So moved.
Do I have a motion?
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. Here you go, Mr. Carey. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you. And I have to say, thank you. You, you spoke in a very highly at NICOM by all the mayors, so.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Javier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to resolution for mayor Gardella to sign the proposal with IMEAG to assist the village in formulating and submitting bacterial assessment study work plan. Do I have a?
This is a new requirement.
Yes.
That we need help with. I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Oh, sir.
Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Resolution authorizing to advertise for the position of planner. And that was what you spoke about earlier?
Yes.
Deputy mayor, so we're going to advertise, uh, for an in-house planner.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corr, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution authorizing public notice to request for proposals for professional planning and engineering on call consulting services resolved. That's, I believe that's part of.
That's part of it. Currently our outside consultant is Nelson Pope and Voorhees. John works with them. And we haven't sent this out to bid since 2016, I think.
So this is part of us, you know, trying to get all the prices and save the village money. So I need, I need the motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Plum, second?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution accepting budget transfers from May 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution to appoint Charles Bruschi as the capital planning consultant. This is just moving Charles as he resigned from treasurer to, to being a consultant.
So moved.
Okay, motion by trustee Corr?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution authorizing notice to proposers, request for proposals for Havens Beach Stormwater Watershed delineation and conveyance analysis. I think we, this is the second time we're doing this? Third time?
Third time.
So we're going to have to reach out to some people.
We've reached out to a couple already to encourage them to.
To respond.
Okay.
Pretends to pay. I'll make the motion.
We'll keep reaching. Thank you. Trustee Corr made the motion, second?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Incorporated Village of Sag Harbor Resolution for GASB 75. Actuarial valuation. This is for consulting. What is this for, Kate?
This is part of our, um, audit that we do every few years. We have to go through the full, um, GASB 75. So this year is, uh, last year we just did a small one. That was a full, full that they needed required by, um, with our annual financial audit.
So is it a New York State requirement?
Yes.
I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second?
Aye.
Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution to appoint Christina Lehr to the Sag Harbor Business Advisory Committee. I met with Christina and Jesse Cole and we had a good conversation. This is just expanding that committee that I established to keep in communication with the village board on issues that concerning the businesses in, in the village.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by trustee Corr. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Appointment of Kathleen McQuiggin as alternate member to the Board of Historic Preservation and Architectural Review.
I'll make that.
Motion by trustee Plum. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Authorization to approve the following outdoor dining applications for the 2025 season. Jack's Coffee, Goldberg Bagels, and the Corner Bar.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corr. Do I have a second? Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Robert Bory, harbor master, requests to accept the resignation of Ryan Brown effective immediately. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pick a full-time job.
Okay, so carried. Robert Bory, harbor master, requesting the following. Move Wilson Bennett to the position of dock master and increase his hourly rate to $25 an hour. Move Anthony Ponzini to the position of pump-out boat operator and increase his hourly rate to $25 an hour. Increase Robert Bory's hourly rate for the 2025, 2026 fiscal year from 45 to $46. Need a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Carrie Garapi, secretary to the Sag Harbor Volunteer Ambulance Corps, requests to remove the following individuals from the insurance rolls effective immediately. Ross Yeomans and Pia Olsen Ferraris. And I would like to thank them both for their service to the ambulance corps.
Yeah, so moved.
Motion by just trustee Kane, second?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Carrie Garapi, secretary to the Sag Harbor Volunteer Ambulance Corps, requests permission to hire the following individuals as paid EMT drivers at the hourly rate of $29 an hour. And add them to the insurance rolls effective June 10th, 2025. Santa Shadri and Aaron M. Hale. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by trustee Corr, seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Accept the April 2025 bank reconciliations and collateral report. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by trustee Plum?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Robert Drake, chief of police, requests authorization to hire the following traffic control officers for the 2025 season effective June 1st, 2025. At the below hourly rate. Santiago Cortez Molina at $19 an hour and Daniela Gomez Sangorima at $19 an hour. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Charles Svetzaraca requests, I hope I said that right.
You're doing pretty good here.
Svetzaraca. If you want to say it in Italian, Svetzaraca, okay?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Plum? Request authorization to have a graduation party at 19 Forest Street on June 21st, 2025 from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. Motion by trustee Corr, second?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Manero Perez from OLA of Eastern Long Island requests permission to have a fundraiser event. Saber cocktail reception at 48 Madison Street, the church on Thursday, July 17th, 2025, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Also requesting to place signs on the grassy area of Long Wharf beside Hashemewett Park and the edge of Route 114. July 3rd, 2025 to July 17th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by trustee Plum, seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Samantha and Timothy Culver request authorization to have a private party at their residence 25 Shore Road. For a viewing of the Sag Harbor Yacht Club fireworks display on July 5th, 2025 from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Have you looked at this application, Bruce?
Yes.
You okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by trustee Corr. Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are we all invited?
Yeah, I don't know.
Small room.
Just have a fun, just have a fun.
Get there through favor, Havens Beach, right?
Yeah.
So moved. Edward Corcoran of Summerhill Landscapes requests permission to have their annual company barbecue picnic at Havens Beach Friday, July 12th, 2025. From 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Also requesting a rain date for July 23rd from 11:00 to 5:00 p.m. And this is a yearly event that they do. They do a nice job.
Yeah, they do a great job.
Motion by trustee Corr. Do I have a second? Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Steven Novak, on behalf of the Sag Harbor Yacht Club, advises that they will hold its annual fireworks show on Saturday, July 5th, 2025, beginning at 9:30 p.m. This is our world famous fireworks show. Do I, do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Jeffrey Terry of the AzureS Property Owners Association requests authorization to have the following events at 3 and 7 Terry Drive. Comedy show on August 29th, 2025 from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. Annual community celebration and fundraising event on August 30th, 2025 from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. Game night on August 31st, 2025 from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane. Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by, do you have any questions or any comments, Bruce?
I have to nice one to report on the special events stuff.
Okay.
Real quick.
Do you, do you want, is it okay? Do you have any questions on us approving this or?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Okay, Bruce, you wanted to?
Real fast, I might as well ask them. Well, here, um, since adopting the special events code, I don't have the paperwork in front of me. But a lot more people have come forward and they really understand what we're trying to do. Uh, for example, the one on Shore Road, very tight road. They have, they are, um, village residents who have stickers or will have a parking path. Park at Havens Beach, shuttle, things like that. Um, that was all laid out within the application. The graduation party, the gentleman didn't understand that he needed one at first. He actually came in for a tent permit. We told him about that. So we got the parking laid out there. Uh, I think it's been working really well. Nobody's complained and he totally understands what we're trying to do as far as, you know, safety and everything like that.
Great to hear.
The address, the address Memorial Day party, um.
Wait, Labor Day.
They do that each year, but.
Labor Day.
I'm sorry, Labor Day party. Um, they do that each year. This year they specified, last year they, you know, kind of did a comedy one night, comedy night one night. It got a little loud. We were all this and that, but they laid everything out for us this year.
That's great. More, more organization.
In more detail as well, so, um, I've spoken to Chief Drake about this, so we're kind of all more prepared, so.
And we're getting them ahead of time. That was, as opposed to like seven days before.
Some, again, were in the transition, the graduation party came in a little, little late, the gentleman didn't know, he got right on it. And, you know, I think it's, I think it's been working that well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thanks, Bruce.
That brings us to the approval of the payment of bills. We have warrant one in the amount of sixty thousand, seven hundred ninety-five dollars and sixty-five cents. Warrant three in the amount of a hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Warrant fifty-one, the amount of four hundred seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars and fifty cents. Warrant number fifty-two in the amount of four hundred sixty-four thousand, three hundred dollars and seventy-eight cents. And warrant number fifty-four in the amount of five hundred dollars. Do I have a motion to pay all of those warrants and the bills?
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The bills are paid. That brings us to our public comments. Fifteen-minute public session, input for comments and questions, three minutes per speaker. Does anybody like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Elizabeth Gilbert, Atlantic Avenue Sag Harbor. Just clarification, what kind of planner are you hiring and what's the job description?
Kate, do we have the job description here?
I don't, actually.
Okay, we can provide the.
We can have it here tomorrow if you'd like.
But essentially.
Are you interested? Are you interested now?
Right now, all of the village planning work is done externally. Much of it's done to Nelson Pope and Voorhees.
All right, planning, municipal planning or budgetary planning?
Municipal planning. It's municipal planning.
So we've been going.
Advising the harbor committee, the planning board and the zoning board, as well as this board. On, you know, John Ellsworth from Nelson Pope and Voorhees was here earlier. So be some of the day-to-day work that Nelson Pope and Voorhees currently does that we, we're hoping can be done a little bit more efficiently and effectively internally if we get the right person with the right qualifications to support us.
And it's something, you know, we're spending a lot of money, a lot of money on this stuff. So we're trying to get somebody in-house to save the village money. You know, we're chipping away at these. As trustee Corr said, you know, we've got this, these costs that just keep going up. We need to start to.
Look at options.
We have to reexamine how we've been doing business, sort of like any company would do from time to time.
But I think there's a real chance that we might be, it might be cost neutral, but we get more effective help and support.
More efficient.
For all of our boards and employees, et cetera.
Yeah, I was concerned about the cost, or concerned about the hiring. I just wanted to know what kind of planner.
Okay.
But if you know anyone, please let us know.
And this personally part of the comprehensive, but, but.
Undoubtedly, yes.
Yes, they would be.
Yeah.
But that would be a separate contract for the comprehensive plan. We'll go to bid for somebody to oversee it.
They, they wouldn't be the one doing the.
No, but they would be involved. There's no doubt. They would be part of the village.
Part of the, part of the resource.
Yeah.
Because they would take away from their day job.
Yes, it would.
I need, anybody else? I just want to make one comment before we leave. Today is the two hundred and fifty year anniversary of Fort Bragg.
Yes.